Welcome, everybody from around the world. Please stand. Well, welcome, everybody, to our close quarters. We're in the process of remodeling the auditorium. They're painting it and we're putting in some new AV equipment and some new chairs. We were using our PEG funds. PEG funds are money we get from the cable companies to help do our cable like this, our broadcasting, our communications, but also we've become very restricted on what we can spend that money on, and it's mostly capital expenses, so we're updating the auditorium right now, and we hope to have it done by middle of March. Back in, by the middle of March? April 1st? Okay, so we'll be having our meetings in here, so the zoning board, planning board, the township board meeting, DRB Design Review Board, it'll be in here going forward until April the 1st. No joke. Okay. Also, just a point of reference, item number five on the Consider Approval Appointments and Reappointments for the Board of Review, we have had a change of appointee there, just want to point that out. If you didn't get a, if you picked up one, we just have a new person that we'll be appointing, and we can discuss that. I just want to point that out to everybody. And as we start every meeting after the Pledge of Allegiance, we open up our microphone to my right, your left, for public comment. If you'd like to come up and make any comment, public comment, now's your time on any issue.
Can I add too that there are public hearings on the agenda, and if you want to speak on that item specifically, you could hold your comments at that time, because we'll open public comment for each of the public hearings.
Oh, I'm sorry, the microphone. My apologies. Yes, the microphone. Thank you.
Mary Alice Leduc, Bloomfield Township President. Water rate pricing will soon be on the agenda, and I am here again asking for you to change the blatantly unfair residential water and sewer rates based on pipe size. Here are the facts. The American Water Works Association does not recommend using pipe size to determine water rates. It simply recognizes it as a factor in metering. I have two emails verifying their policy. Pipe size should not be a factor in residential pricing. It should only be used for commercial units. The term "potential," which the township uses in residential homes, is a manufactured definition to give you a false rationale for charging some people more for infrastructure costs that are not aligned with their water usage. It is not true, real, or a meaningful metric. Stop using it. Yes, everyone needs to pay some infrastructure charge, but water usage is the only fair measure that represents the cost of buying and processing water. Many households with large pipe sizes are subsidizing households with smaller pipes. My water usage is five to six units per quarter, yet my bill is higher than households that are using 15 to 16 units. The township is not incurring higher costs because of larger pipe sizes. This is false information. Charge more for water usage and make the infrastructure costs the same for all residents. Water usage is determined by the number of people in a household and the frequency of washing or lawn sprinkling. It is not based on potential. The water budget is sitting with 20 million in reserves, an excess of 6 million over the 14 million needed. Why is this? Why are you collecting way in excess of need? Explain this to residents. Why are you sending water and sewer interest to the general fund? Yes, I am aware of MCL 41.77, but this was written before enterprise funds even existed. Enterprise funds' interest should stay with the enterprise fund to keep rates down. It should not be going to fund overspending in the general fund. The water rates in Bloomfield Township are much higher than in nearby communities. Why is this? Have you explained the higher cost to residents? No one on this board is impacted by the unfair rates on pipe size, so you have ignored the impact on 22 households that are being unfairly penalized. None of you question the current system or ask for alternatives to be presented. There are options to change, to charge more for usage, which is the primary driver of costs. The current system needs change now, not when the meter changes are completed, in years. This is not an acceptable excuse.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Alice. Anybody else like to make a public comment? Please step up to the microphone. If not, we'll close public comment and move on to item number two, which is Consider Consent Agenda. And if anybody on the trustees would like to move an item off the consent agenda, otherwise I'll move for a motion to approve.
I would like to move a few items off. The item B, approve the board minutes of February 10, 2025. Item C, approve amendment to the village police budget. And then approval of payroll and vouchers.
Okay, so those will become items number 10, 11, and 12. And then, so the last item on, only item left for Consider Consent Agenda is approve the joint investment study session minutes from the February 5th. If there's a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Support? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, that's item number two. Item number three, we already did that. We did that earlier today, so.
Actually, right. Should I make a motion to remove the many agenda, to remove item three?
Yes. And support?
Support.
All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Okay. Moving right along. Item number four, Public Hearing of Necessity, Werner Estate Special Assessment District, number four through one, presented by Jennifer Worthman, our deputy assessor. Hi, Jennifer.
Hi. Okay. We are here tonight about the Werner Estates/Overbrook West Road SAD proposed paving project. This is going to be Special Assessment District number 431. Werner Estates in Overbrook West is composed of the Werner Estates subdivision, Werner Estates number one, Werner Estates number two, Werner Estates number three, and then Overbrook West. Here's a map of the entire district, and you'll notice Overbrook West is up off of Long Lake Road, and then the rest of this is comprised of Werner Estates. The project is 2.9 miles of public road that includes Stonely Road, Barchester Drive, Ardmore Drive, Ardmore Court, Brightmore Court, Brightmore Road, Sandhurst Road, Conmore Court, Compton Way, and Werner Court. The project consists of pulverizing the existing road and replacing new asphalt pavement four inches thick over the aggregate base with full-depth cold milling, asphalt removal. We'll be doing total curb and gutter removal and replacement. Where it currently exists, total under-drain installation with sodded shoulders. Minor drainage improvements will be made to reasonably assure the drainage of the pavement, and all shoulders and disturbed areas will be covered with topsoil and sod. A maximum five-foot approach will be constructed to the existing driveways to provide a smooth transition from the newly paved road where necessary. Included a few pictures from Werner Estates, just so you can see the current condition. The petition's been confirmed by the township assessor. It was supported by 59.76% of the homeowners, representing 60.41% of the road frontage. This was a great approval rating for this SAD. Estimated project cost is $3,993,165.48, which across 164 units of benefit breaks down to $24,348.57 per parcel receiving a full unit of benefit. The assessment can be financed over the 15 years, and the interest will be determined after bonds are sold at 1% over the bond rate. Tonight, we're asking for you to approve Resolution Number Two and schedule a public hearing for final assessment for May 11 of 2026. We're also asking that you approve our agreement with the Road Commission. This will allow us to finalize plans and bid the project next year.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. So they really hustled with this. They've been working hard at it, but we are kind of limited by the amount of projects that the Road Commission is able to do. So we have the two village projects being completed, which puts them next in line to get ready to go for 2026. Any questions?
Which is a year from this.
It is a year from, yep, yep. But they're ready to go. So we're also in the process of a water main project. Engineering identified that this subdivision was on the to-do list for the water mains, so they bumped them up, and they are in the process of getting our water main project going. They'll be consistently working through that this year and slightly into 2026, hopefully, to have it finished in time to get these guys going with their road project.
That makes sense, to get the water project done first.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else, Jennifer?
That's all I got.
Okay, so at this time, we can open up for public comment. If you'd like to come up and comment on this item for Werner Estate Special Assessment District, please step up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Lisa Speck, and I live on Conmore Court. And I just, after paying taxes in Bloomfield Township for the last 60 some-odd years, I'd like to know why the township and the county dropped the ball on this. And the other thing is, I mean, we're paying taxes, why isn't it going to fix our roads? And then the other thing is, if we have to pay for this, can't we deduct it from our taxes?
Okay. Any other comments? Please step up to the microphone.
My name is Jeff Haynes. I'm at 4350 Ardmore. I'm in the Special Assessment District. Couple of questions. One, and I'm not sure you can answer these, and I'm not sure you're obligated to answer them, but I'm going to ask them anyway. First, what's the projected length of, what's the projected longevity of the road? Do we know that?
Yeah, we'll answer your question. Go ahead and ask the question, and then we'll come back and answer.
And then, secondly, does the cost, by the way, I've read the special assessment policy that you adopted last year, and so I have a question as to whether or not the cost right now includes the township's consulting fees, the township administrative fee, and then municipal bond costs. Okay? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments with the microphone open? Otherwise, we'll close public comment.
My name's Kevin Wood. I'm a 25-year homeowner in Werner Estates. I'm also the president, and I'm the guy that's been leading this charge with Jennifer. We started back in 2017. We got through the letters of expression, the quote, and then we kind of got locked down with COVID. When we re-initiated it, we had to start the process over, the letter of intent, the quoting, which took some length of time, and then we embarked on the approvals. I think we've done everything right. The communications, we've set up a website, we've had canvassers knock door to door. We've had lots of interaction on it, so I'm really pleased with the collaboration we've had with the township, and the timing is aligned to our expectation. We want to get the water main roads fixed in 2025, and then the roads fixed in 2026. Jennifer didn't mention, but the price has actually come down slightly from the original estimate because of some recalculations of the county's oversight, which was about $1,000 benefit per homeowner. So I just want you to know, the vast majority of folks are very supportive. I mean, we stopped taking petitions at well over 100, and we could have kept going. That was just in the first 90 days. So I fully support it, and everyone I talked to in our neighborhood, or at least I shouldn't say everyone, but the vast, vast majority are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any other comment? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing, comment, and open it up for answers and comments from the board.
No, it's just extremely significant. The number of 59% is almost unheard of to have that many people in favor, so that says a lot.
As someone who did their own subdivision 30 years ago, as a young homeowner, somehow I got knocking on all the doors and talking to all the neighbors, but the best thing you can do is keep everybody informed, and you'll have a successful turnout, and thank you. I know how much effort it takes. Glad it's finally happening.
And then, we have to answer the question about all the costs involved in the bond. And Michael, do you want to answer that question, or do you want Mark from Road Commission?
Well, I think Jen should answer what was included in the original estimate. The SAD policy revision that we adopted last year changed how we calculated the bond costs to be more consistent with what they were turning out to be and to allow for larger bond offerings, which is what these have become. You know, in the past, these were traditionally, you know, $2, $3 million types of deals, and, you know, last year we did 19 million, and this year we'll probably do 20 million. So, I mean, you get economies of scale as you sell more bonds, and so the cost comes down. So that's what's reflected in the SAD policy as it relates to the financing costs. I think I'll let Jen address the other elements and what's changed in the policy.
It was under the old policy, so any of the SADs that were currently in motion at the time when we went through and did the new policy still adhere to the old policy. So this one has, I believe it's a 3.5% on the legal and financing, and a half percent on the admin and management fee. So we switched those over to more of a set rate moving forward, but any of the existing SADs, we kept that old policy. And also, Kevin kind of touched base, but the Road Commission gave back 5% of their admin costs as well, which is what allowed us to reduce each individual unit of benefit by $1,000.
And then, would you like to answer the question on the longevity of the new road, or do you want Mark to answer that?
Yeah, Mark, you want to come on up?
Mark, will you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, I'm Mark Mezler. Mark Mezler from the Road Commission for Oakland County. I'm the subdivision coordinator for the Road Commission. So myself and my staff did the design, valuation of the roads, et cetera, et cetera. So when we design SAD projects, we design for a 30-year life expectancy. Life expectancy is kind of undefined, but we have many roads within the county that are, you know, 40, 50 years old and starting to go through this process at this point. So I would expect that you will see a longevity of this road. Obviously, as times move forward and materials are updated and et cetera, et cetera, you know, even though we're designing for 30 years, we're really seeing 35- and 40-year life expectancy cycles because of the upgraded materials that we're using.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments from the board?
No, Mike, can you just address one of the issues as far as who owns the roads?
Right. So the county owns our roads, and the gentleman said, or the lady said, "Why hasn't there been funding to pay for these roads?" And I am taken back by the fact that there isn't any money to fix our roads. And the money we've been offered is very small in comparison to the cost of replacing our roads. And I was in the legislature when we increased road funding, and they put it through a formula called Act 51, and most of that money gets caught up at the state level and at the county level for main roads, but it's not coming into our neighborhoods, unfortunately. And so we have some work here to do, and they're talking in Lansing about more road funding and how to pay for it. And so we have to be part of those conversations because we need to have the money come directly into our community to fix these roads and not get caught up in another level of government. Otherwise, if it does, there's always handcuffs tied to it. We don't need handcuffs. We just need money to pay for our roads. As you said, we've been all paying property taxes for years. This should never have happened, considering the amount of taxes we pay, both in our personal income tax, but also in our property tax. So Michael Scholstak and I, about, I don't know, was it three weeks ago, had lunch with Jeremy Moss, our state senator, and Haley Stevens, our US Congresswoman, and we talked about some of these issues. And one of the issues I brought up with Haley is can we make these SAD Special Assessment District payments a tax write-off annually on our returns? Because right now, we get up to about a $10,000 max write-off on our property taxes, and there's nothing there for infrastructure upgrades that we're paying for. It's a tax we're paying that's been levied on us, and we have no voice in it. Basically, we have no choice. So she is willing to work with us on that. I was in touch with her staff last week to kind of lay out how we should go about doing this and how they will go about doing this, and we're getting a lot of cooperation and assistance, and we'll continue down that road. So we're taking two paths here, or more. One is to try and get success, or at least have Washington in the process to look at an SAD, a Special Assessment District for infrastructure, which would be roads, sewer, and water lines, to make that a separate tax deductible item above and beyond the property tax. So at least we get something back, right? The next one is, we're looking at hiring a lobbying firm in Lansing to help us and help our representative and senators to achieve some sort of funding to help pay for this. I don't care if it's partial funding, some funding, because right now, we're not getting much at all. And even though we have a millage, we probably need north of $10 million annually to pay for our roads, to repair them. As one representative told me, our potholes is what's holding our roads together, and that's not good. So we are working on it. We're going to put a, you know, full press on this issue, as well as some other issues that need to be addressed, and we'll keep you in the loop, but you were right on the money in everything you just said. Yeah. And hopefully, we get at least a tax deduction out of this, because right now, it's just straight out of your pocket. And if you take the assessment, figure over 15 years, add interest to it, it really adds up quite a bit. And we're already paying high property taxes, so it's a hidden tax that we're being stuck with, and you're right, poor planning. Absolutely. Okay. Was there any other questions or comments the board would like to make?
Okay. I do have one question regarding the water and sewer repairs and starting the repair of the road. How much time will pass between completing the water and sewer project and repairing the roads?
I can't speak to the water and sewer project. That is engineering that's handling it. I have advised Corey. It was all initially supposed to be done in 2025, I believe, and it's kind of extended into 2026. I've given him our timeline for the road SAD, and I'm assuming that that's being worked out between him and the Road Commission.
We can get an answer, though, and get back to you, Mark.
And what's the, how does that impact moving forward with the group? Because if everything aligns with the homeowners association and residents prefer us to wait to do that after the pipes are torn up and damaging the roads instead of paying twice?
That's what you said we're doing, right?
That's what.
That's what we're doing.
The township, yeah. The township's funding the water main project. The township's paying for that now, and then the road project will follow the water main project.
The project for the water and sewers this summer, and then next year is the road replacement.
And the residents are okay with having the roads torn up a little bit during that period? There is it?
Yeah, pick a panel.
Well, I think it's important.
I mean, the township's already communicated to us, they're doing this water lane, water line modernization project. And the expectation they've set is they will need to make cuts in the road and then repair them. So we said, timeout, we don't want to put brand-new roads in.
Yeah.
So the township has communicated to the association that the water line modernization project will require cuts in the road to replace piping. I don't know how many cuts. I don't know, you know, the devastation of that, but I think I have an idea, because I've seen it in some other places. So we, as an association, said, "We don't want to do our roads and then have them cut up." So we've worked with the township to put a cycle plan in place to have the water lines done now. You can't hurt our roads anymore. I mean, they're just deplorable. And then, following that, we do the new roads. Now, you bring up a point that if something happens and the water lines don't get done, people aren't going to want to do the roads until they're done. That's going to be a really critical, you know, timeline, but there's a year. We have a year in that window. Did I make sense?
No, it does make sense, but if you finish one project late, if the first project ends late in the year, they probably won't start the roads until next April.
Right. But that's the plan.
That's when, yeah, we are on target to probably start by May, May to June, probably.
And the residents are okay with waiting several months?
The resident's expectation is we do the water lines in 2025, between spring and fall, or whatever is 2025, and the road reconstruction starts.
Can you go back to the microphone?
And the road reconstruction starts in late spring or through the summer of 2026.
Okay, as long as that's part of what was discussed.
That's been communicated. That's the expectation, and that cycle plan works, right?
No, I agree with you 100%. My number-one concern is if it finishes in November, and you have to wait till spring, summer to start, I don't want residents complaining that, "Why haven't you fixed?"
We've set the expectation, spring of '26 through fall of '26 window is when the roads will be done, and I think we're aligned to the township on that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And then, one last thing is, Mr. Wood, I want to make sure we get your contact information. We're starting a road committee to talk about roads in the township, and I want to get people from different communities to participate to help us go forward with this. Yeah, we need some input from the community and help and assistance.
I can email it to you, Mike.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer. Okay. Any more comments from the board? If not, we'll close this.
Make a motion. They have, what, May 11, 2026 for the.
Second public hearing.
Second, thank you, second public hearing.
Support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you. Item number five, Consider Approval Appointments and Repoints. What's that? Okay. Darren, it's all yours.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. As Supervisor McCready stated earlier, we did have a conflict, a scheduling conflict, with our prior appointee, and so I was able to circle wagons, and I found an excellent alternative for our initial appointee. I think some of you folks may know Dan T. Hand. Dan's been, he's been a local realtor here in the township and surrounding areas, West Bloomfield, Birmingham, you know, Bloomfield Township for close to 30 years now. Dan's also sat on the March Board Review in the city of Birmingham. So with that, you know, comes the specific knowledge of how to operate, how to run, and how to get along with the other three board members. So Dan's been, Dan's been an interesting guy for us, because we've dealt with him on a number of levels at the Board of Review over the years. He's brought appeals. He's brought also additional amount of help for us, because we're able to tap into his knowledge based on certain sales that have happened and different types of things like that. So I do recommend Dan T. Hand to be appointed to our current vacancy for a term ending December 31, 2026. I also would recommend that we re-appoint our three current board members. I guess Jason Dabbish is one of our current board members. Jason was our chair last March and did a fantastic job for us. Mike Wilson will be an alternate board member, and so will Don Barnes. So I'd like those three to be reappointed as well.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Ann Farhad, correct?
Oh, Ann Farhad, yes, I'm sorry. Farhad's our longstanding guy. I keep forgetting about him. This will be Farhad's, actually, I think, his eighth term, so we've had good consistency with Farhad.
Okay, any comments from the board?
The only comment is, I know, and going on my 22nd year on the board, whenever you have given a recommendation, this board has always approved it, because we have complete, I have complete confidence in anybody that you have recommended. Previous person you recommended, Leo Savoy, certainly brought more to the table than this individual because of his assessing background, but if he's unavailable, he's unavailable. However, I do think it's important that whoever you recommend, you're the expert, and you're the person who is the one that we rely on, and to not rely on that concerns me if anybody were to do that. So again, I'm certainly ready to, unless there's other comments, ready to make a motion that we approve all the individuals that you have presented to us.
I had a comment before we go to a motion. So I want to thank you for your work on this, and I actually appreciate bringing new people in. I know that's something that we've also talked about. I mean, there's the experience side, and there's the new people side, and I think it's always a good idea to bring in people that have a good background, but also want to be involved in the township, and sometimes new perspectives, new ideas. I think it's great. So thank you very much for bringing this to us.
Dan's going to be an excellent addition to the board. I have full faith in him. I have full faith in him.
So, Neil made a motion. Is there a second or support?
Support.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's approved. And I need to go back to, um, line item number four briefly. Mark brought to our attention. Mark, do you want to go back and revisit item number four?
A second motion that needed to be made regarding the road commission, um, contract. That needs to be approved, so that, um, estimates can be made.
Yes.
Go ahead. I moved that the township board authorized the supervisor to assign the attached Bloomfield Township Road Paving Services Agreement.
Great. Support, any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say the same? Okay, approved. Thank you, Mark, for checking on that. Item number six, public hearing, consider approval of a site plan and special land use request for Ace Pickleball 2285 Franklin Road. Andrea?
Hi, good evening. So, this evening's presentation is specific to a request for a site plan and special land use review, um, located at 2285 Franklin Road. The proposed use is Ace Pickleball. Um, as you can see highlighted on your screen here, the particular parcel that we're talking about is actually zoned in the blue classification, which is Research Park. Solu Pickleball LLC is seeking approval to construct a 32,250-square-foot indoor Ace Pickleball facility, which will include a total of 11 courts, um, with an 1,800-square-foot mezzanine. So, the good news is this proposed use is, uh, to take place entirely inside. Um, it will not take up the entire building, as the remainder of the building does have office uses near the, um, eastern portion of the site, which is actually located a little bit closer to Franklin Road. The intended location for the Ace Pickleball is actually more towards the rear of the property in the westerly, um, portion of the building. So, again, no, no exterior changes proposed, uh, for the site. The interior layout of the facility, you can see highlighted on your screen, um, they are indicating a total of 11, um, sports courts. Um, the proposal for the Ace Pickleball is actually an open, um, uh, membership, um, intended for optimal playing conditions for the patrons. Their proposed hours of operation for this use is Monday through Friday, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Saturday from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We do not have any hours of, um, regulated hours of operation in Research Park. And again, this is a use that's gonna be fully inside, so we do not have any concerns about any noise or impact to adjacent residents. So, the master plan, um, does indicate that the subject property adjacent to Franklin Road, north of Square Lake Road, um, is to be used for technology park and light industrial businesses. The existing property is zoned, as I stated earlier, Research Park, and this proposed use does comply with the provisions of our master plan as a recreational use complies with the conditions, um, within the zoning ordinance, and it is a, uh, special use within the Research Park District. There are other similar sports facilities, indoor sports facilities, that are located, uh, north of, uh, Square Lake Road off Franklin. Um, we've got the Detroit Skate Club, um, we've got the Bloomfield Tennis, and then this would just be another, um, indoor sports facility, um, in that location. In terms of considerations for special, uh, site plan review, um, there are not, um, a significant amount of, uh, because there's no changes. The proposal itself, as I stated, is pretty straightforward. Um, they do have, um, existing ingress and egress into the site, which they are not proposing to make any changes to, so you can access the site off Hewlett Drive immediately south of the property. Um, the site plan does show, um, that there are some existing lot lines, um, between the property to the immediately east of the site. Um, they do share a common parking field, as you can see shown on the, um, aerial map. So, there is a shared parking agreement, um, that is on record and has been submitted by the applicant, indicating that both the office building located to the rear of the site and the, um, building itself on Hewlett that we're referring to, that they do have a shared parking agreement, and that property to the rear of the site is at 550 Hewlett Drive. So, existing, uh, configuration with ingress and egress to the site. As I stated earlier, the applicant did provide what we call a reciprocal easement agreement to allow for the shared parking and site circulation between these two sites. The site plan does show a total of 346 parking spaces. Um, the applicant did provide a shared parking study prepared by Colliards dated October 18th, 2024, and they do conclude that the weekday and weekend parking demand, um, will be met and satisfied with the parking spaces, the 346 parking spaces that are provided. They do note in the, in the conclusion of their review of that shared parking study that the weekday, um, demand, the, will be met, um, as well as weekend demand, which is gonna come in at 331 is the estimated maximum demand on the weekends. And as I stated, the site does have 346 parking spaces. So, um, with the shared parking agreement, as well as the consideration of the remainder of the site building being an office use, they don't operate on the weekends. So, the peak hours of the weekend uses of the, um, pickleball work favorably in, in this regard. In terms of the landscape plan, I do have some photos of the existing sites. Um, there are no proposed landscape changes. The landscaping on the site right now, they have provided us with, the applicant did provide us with a landscape plan indicating vegetation that is on site, and it is, uh, heavily vegetated and well-conditioned. Um, so there will be no proposed changes to the landscaping and, um, existing, uh, conditions to remain. Uh, just want to note that there is a requirement for a dumpster enclosure, enclosure, as well as a loading area, and that has been provided and shown. There's an existing loading area that is, again, to the rear of the site, immediately adjacent to the building, as well as a dumpster enclosure, that does meet the requirements within our zoning ordinance. Um, in terms of looking at this under the special land use provisions that are laid out within Section 42, 6.2 of our zoning ordinance, as it relates to any impacts with noises, sounds, light, that may be affiliated with a special land use. And, uh, in our review, we do indicate that there's no additional noise that's being anticipated. Again, this is totally inside. Um, no, uh, exterior changes to lighting that will remain the same. And in terms of aesthetics, again, as I stated, there's no exterior building changes. So, in terms of our, um, analysis of any, um, external impacts of this use on an adjacent properties, we do not find that to be a concern with this proposal. And with that, I can answer any questions. There is an example on your screen that the applicant has provided of some of their other locations. Um, so you can kind of see what the interior buildout of this tenant space will look like. Um, the applicant is not seeking a liquor license. There will be an area to have, uh, to sit down and to have some snacks and, and non-alcoholic beverages, but they're not seeking a liquor license with this request. And you do see highlighted within your, uh, staff report, the various, uh, responses from the fire department, police department, and environmental engineering services, um, noting, noting that upon, um, engineering plan review, that they will have to calculate the residential equivalent units to be calculated for this, uh, building as it relates to this use. Um, assessing department noting that they have no objections to this proposed, proposed, proposed project. Uh, lastly, this, uh, proposal did have an opportunity to visit our design review board on January 15th, 2025, and was forwarded on to the planning commission with a favorable recommendation. And then also, they did have an opportunity to, um, present their proposal at January 20th's Planning Commission meeting. At that time, a motion was made to forward this request on to the Township Board of Trustees with the consideration that, uh, any approval would be conditioned on compliance, compliance with the requirements of township departments, compliance with the requirements of the Township Board Traffic Consultants, and any proposed or future signage would have to be reviewed and submitted for review by the Design Review Board. Uh, so for this evening, we would ask that the, um, the Township Board ask any questions, take any public comment if there is any. Uh, we also do have representation here as behalf, on behalf of the, uh, applicant. Um, and, and with that, I can certainly answer any questions. Again, a rather straightforward application in the sense that everything's inside. They've got parking demand being met and no exterior changes. So, again, with that, I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. And it is a public hearing, so we'll just leave the microphone open if there's any comment. But Matt, you're here. Would you like to get up and say anything? Welcome. Introduce yourself.
Good evening, Matthew Sossen, 39,000 Country Club Drive, Farmington Hills, Michigan. We're just, we're really excited. I'd like to say that working with, um, with, with Andrea and Patty and everybody has been, has been great, and, um, it's been a very smooth process. Like, we try to do that by, you know, not asking for any changes or variances, but it has been a, a very easy, transparent process, and I appreciate that. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
So, we'll open the public hearing. If there's anybody here that would like to make a comment on it from the public, please step up to the microphone. This is their opportunity. If not, I'll close public hearing and open up to the board for any questions or comments.
I thought it was a great presentation by Andrea. It seemed very straightforward. There's really no concerns. Pickleball, there's always the, the concern about the noise, but it's all enclosed, so, no, it looks, it looks good. It seems like it's in a great location up in that Research Park area with other similar athletic-type functions.
Yes.
So, it looks great to me.
Thank you.
If there's no other, uh.
No, just, uh, like I mentioned to you, the planning commission, thank you for coming to Bloomfield Township with this business, because I think it's outstanding use of the facilities and a great location. Certainly gonna bring a lot of more recreational opportunities, uh, to our residents and surrounding, um, communities, so, uh, again, it's great. Uh, it's quiet. It's not a parking issue, and, um, I think we'll do very well. Wish you well with it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, so we'll probably do two motions on this, and go ahead. Sorry, Mark.
I've got one question, uh, question about, um, uh, serving beverages. Will we also be serving food?
We will have, you know, water, Gatorade, um, probably like, you know, energy bars for sale. That's, that's it. We try to focus on pickleball. That's what we're focusing on.
Okay.
If people have birthday parties, or if there's corporate events, they'll bring in pizza, wings, um, from an outside party. We'll have nothing to do with it.
Yeah, it's a nice area for, uh, sporting and activities. You have the gymnastics going on nearby. You have lacrosse and karate, which I'm familiar with, and some dance. So, it's a nice area for this facility.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so we'll do two motions. On the, the first one, if we get a motion on the, on the, uh, special land use.
I'll make a motion on special land use for the Ace Pickleball court.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All passed. The second one is to approve the site plan.
Uh, I'll make that.
Support.
Can I just add to that, the, the, the conditions for both? Yeah, we was gonna get there. You were so quick on that, I couldn't get my conditions in.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so the conditions being in compliance with the department, uh, reports, uh, compliance with the, uh, parking consultants, and, uh, any signage goes to the Design Review Board.
Support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes. Thank you. Good luck, Matt.
When are you gonna be open?
I anticipate being open in September.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. All right, item number seven, public hearing, consider approval of a lot split of 4530 Court Road, presented by Andrea Bibby. Hi, Andrea, welcome back.
Hi, yeah, it was, it was a short wait. Um, this is a proposal for a lot split that you had an opportunity to get an overview at, uh, your, a previous Township Board meeting. Um, and tonight, we do have the, um, the applicant here, uh, Mr. Kenny Hanawa? Nick Hanawa, thank you, um, in, in the, uh, audience here tonight. And the proposal is for the parcel located at 4520. I just want to make a note that the address on the agenda is not accurate, just to clarify. The address that we're looking at is 4520. Corton Road?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Make note of that. 4520 Corton Road.
So, the proposal here is the, um, the parcel that we see highlighted on your screen. It is located, um, at the, uh, corner of Corton Road and Franklin Road. Um, the subject property, as it's currently conformed, is 4.07 acres, measuring at 177,217, uh, square feet, square feet. Um, as you can see highlighted, it is zoned yellow. That is our, um, single-family residential zoning district. Um, and anytime that we have a request for a lot split within the township, we do have a, a, a separate general law ordinance, um, that does require that all the standards within that lot split ordinance are met, um, or else they wouldn't be eligible for a lot split. So, there are no, uh, variances that can be sought. Um, they either meet, meet the benchmarks of that requirement and then are able to proceed to the Township Board, or if they do not meet the benchmarks of that requirement, then they are unable to proceed. So, in this instance, we are bringing before you a proposal that does, um, comply with the provisions of that lot split ordinance. Um, and specifically what we're looking at, when we're looking at that lot split ordinance, is we're looking at, um, the proposed configuration or the resultant parcels meeting the average with an area, um, of what the properties are that are around it. So, in this instance, you can see highlighted on the screen that the proposed, uh, parcel is slightly larger than the parcels that are around it. So, what we did is we do an assessment, um, and you can see within your staff report, um, we did do an analysis of those, um, various parcels that are surrounding this, and I can get a little bit more into that, uh, further. Um, but what we have shown on the screen here is the, the current, uh, land, uh, legal description. Um, the Exhibit A, which does show, um, the configuration of, of the property currently. I do want to note that this property, um, does have, it is platted out into the, um, public right-of-way. So, I just want to make note that as part of our final analysis, when we're looking at the final land area and, uh, widths of the parcel, that we are, in fact, removing that public right-of-way area, because really that is not part of the private parcel. So, I just want to point out that we did take that in consideration when we did our analysis. So, as you can see, so this is the current configuration. This is the proposed configuration. So, the proposed, the applicant has provided a survey completed by, uh, DIFIN Engineering that shows the division of 4520 by splitting the parcel into three single-family residential lots. For a point of reference, each lot is labeled as Parcel A, which is the larger lot that is immediately to the south. And then to the north of that, there are the two smaller parcels side-by-side, Parcel B, and Parcel Three, Parcel C. So, and when we're looking at the analysis in this instance, because we're working with three roadways, we had to look at an analysis of Corton Road, Mark Hopkins to the north, and Franklin Road to the east. So, um, as part of this calculation, we were able to determine that resultant, um, the parcels that are proposed, Parcel A, the resultant parcel is, would come in measuring at 68,000 zeros, 68,006 square feet would be the resultant Parcel A. The resultant Parcel B would come in at 33,613 square, square feet. And lastly, Parcel C would come in at 32,495 square feet. So, the, uh, the, the remaining, uh, lot sizes do comply with what the average, when we looked at a total of all the parcels that are along Franklin Road, parcels along Mark Hopkins, and parcels around Corton Road that all fall within 500 feet of this proposal, we do come up with a total average, uh, requirement per lot, which the total land area, based on these averages, is actually coming in at 22,850 square feet. And then the required, um, average lot width is 136. So, by doing our averaging, we have the table within your packet. You can see that the resultant parcels do meet that test, and they do comply with the provisions of that, um, of the, uh, averaging. Um, I do want to note that also we'll review, when we're looking at lot splits, shown on your screen here, they do show the, um, the boxes that are, um, drawn into each, uh, resultant parcel does demonstrate the required setbacks, which would be required, and they do take into account two frontages, um, on both the upper right-hand, uh, parcel, as well as the southerly parcel. They are taking into account that they do have two front yard setbacks. Um, this was reviewed by our various departments. Um, the Treasurer's Department did, uh, did report that the taxes have been paid, um, since the, since the previous meeting, so they are squared away on that. Um, they also want to note that, um, public water and sewer are available to all properties. We did, uh, touch upon this at the previous meeting, in which the applicant, due to the, um, lot size of being over an acre, the larger parcel, they would be eligible to remain to keep their septic system. However, we heard from the applicant, their interest would be to connect all three of these parcels to public water and sewer. Um, so I just want to make a point of that. Um, and then they, the, uh, Engineering and Environmental Services noting that, um, if the, uh, split is approved by the Township Board, the property owner is responsible for the payment for all sewer connection fees to the public sewer pursuant to the Township ordinance for Parcels B and C, and then it sounds like also for, uh, for Parcel A is gonna be, uh, part of their, um, their desired outcome. So, with that, I can, happy to answer any questions. Um, the applicant is, um, the board tonight, uh, would be, um, asked to intake any public input, and I can certainly answer any questions, um, but ultimately, your consideration would be to consider whether or not you have enough information to approve, um, a lot split for, um, the parcel at 4520 Corton Road, known as 1919477017 is the current legal Sidwell number. And I do have provided within your packet photographs of the lot as it sits in its current. packet photographs of the lot as it sits in its current configuration.
Thank you, Andrea. Before we open up for public comment, I know Nick, the applicant here, would you like to come up, Nick, and have any, say anything?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Nick Hanawa. I currently reside at 5420 Wing Lake Road in Bloomfield Township. This property is located right next door to my parents' house. That's my parents' house in the picture, the one on the left. We purchased it a few years back from our neighbor who had owned this property for years and years and years. The home was, was there. It was in very bad shape. Anything of historical significance was sold or taken out of the house during a state sale. We initially planned on doing something with the whole family there, but it's a four-acre lot. It's, I don't want to mow four acres worth of lawn every single week, so decided to split it up like this. And the plan is, I would like to develop a home for, to be adjacent to my parents' house on the front half and just sell the back two lots. So, that's why we're splitting the lots today. I think it's a good use, and we can bring a couple more families into our amazing township that we have. So, thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, just let me know.
All right, thank you. So, we'll open up for public hearing, and if anybody here is from the audience would like to speak about this, please step forward to the microphone.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, my name is Barbara Block, and I live at 5455 Franklin Road. And I've been here for about 43 years. And I just want to say, I 100% approve of this development. It's going to be wonderful. It's going to enhance the whole area. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Block. Any other comments? Please step up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Steve Harris. I'm the president of the Nob Hill Homeowners. And Nob Hill is directly north of, and right next to where we're talking about. We have deed restrictions on the three parcels that put together Nob Hill. And in the front of our homes, we have plantings that are required as part of our, our homes. So, I would try to, like to work with the township and the owner to make sure. I mean, we can't impose those deed restrictions, and I'm not, I know we can't. But we'd still like to have foundation plantings, because that would be consistent with Mark Hopkins and all the other homes on Mark Hopkins and elsewhere throughout our subdivision. So, I'd ask that you think about that. And also, we heard there's, you know, the roads might be chewed up, or I'm not quite sure how those sewer connections will be made. We went through, we, we paid for our roads to be redone maybe 10 years ago. And so, there's, you know, maybe another 20-plus years of life in those roads. I don't want them to be destroyed by this potential sewer hookup or whatever construction, whatever is going on. So, we ask that you think about that as well. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Make sure we have your contact information. I'd like to talk to you about our road committee we're putting together. Be great to have your input.
Sure.
Any other public comment? If not, we'll close, close the public hearing and open up to the board for any comments or questions.
No, just said it's a, it's a, the lot split certainly meets our criteria. In fact, Mr. Hakawa, if he wanted to, can have additional lots. It meets the criteria for that. And I know from his previous properties in the township and his parents' property, that whatever he does will be very tasteful and will have outstanding landscaping. So, and he will take care of whatever he needs to take care of. I just, I know him, and I know he will do that.
So, I just want a clarification. Nick, I live right near there. I drive by it all the time. And looking at the plot, it confuses me because apparently there's a lot right now between your parents' house and this property, and it's all orange fenced. But then there's, it appears like another vacant lot with like pine trees planted. So, that is part of this parcel, is what it looks like from this. But when you drive by it, it looks like the construction zone is here. And then there's this, you know, unbuilt lot with a row of clearly planted pine trees. So, they've kind of beautified that in the short run. But that's, that's going to be part of your, your new property, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so the reason, the reason that was like that is Mr. Burnett was saying, we could have done more lots. And then initially, we were going to keep just that one lot next to that house. But then we decided to just keep the whole entire front lot. So, that property would actually be completely utilized in that, in that way.
Yeah, when we, when we saw it being torn down, my husband and I were saying, how many lots are they going to split this one into? And when I came, it was only three. Those are nice, nice lots.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think we could have easily done four, even here.
I didn't run that analysis.
I don't want to get into all that. It was a long, it was a long process. I think we could have done four, but we just, I decided to just keep the front, the whole entire front. So, that'll all be utilized in some, in some fashion. Obviously, we're going to do plans, get hire an architect, engineer.
Well, and I, I'm familiar with your house, with your decorations. So, I, I have every good faith that it will be beautiful when you're done, so.
We, we, we've been living there since, I think, 1996. I, I actually went to Conan Elementary and Bloomfield's Middle School, both. I graduated from, you know, I went to both schools. So, I've grown up here my whole life. We just want to do good for, for the township. And, you know, so we're going to make sure, like you said, to do a very tasteful project there. So.
Yeah, we'll be watching. You'll be our neighbors because we're just down the street.
Yeah, I love it. Stop by.
Thank you, Nick. Any other comments or questions?
Just briefly, I mean, there was also mentioned by a Nob Hill HOA president about deed restrictions. And of course, those are private matters, a contract issue, and there's nothing for us to do. But I would imagine your new neighbor will be, will work with the HOA and.
That's all I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to.
That's what I heard, too.
I, I have a follow-up question to what Martin just stated. Is it possible? Because I'm looking at the map, and it doesn't make sense to not have them part of Nob Hill if we could do so. And is that possible?
I don't, I don't believe that it is. So, the neighborhood was platted a long time ago. This piece of property was excluded from that process. It's one of the original homeowner, landowners of the entire area, I believe. And so, it's, it's not part of the original contract that established the neighborhood and established the deed restrictions.
Okay. Normally, in that case, it would have to be Nick asking them to take him on to the association if he, if he so choose to ask, and then it would be up to them to entertain it.
And they'd have to replat.
And replat it. Okay. Any other comments? If not, entertain a motion.
Thanks for that question.
Unless there's anything else.
I just, I just want to add that I, I think this is a, you know, as everyone said, a great opportunity. And I'm very much supportive in the fact that it could have been more. And so, I respect that he wants to be close to his family and do something nice and, you know, have two new, two nice-sized parcels.
Great.
Make a motion that we approve the lot split in 4520 Corton Road.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. Thank you. Good luck, Nick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, consider approval of a site plan for the DFCU, I think it's Dearborn Federal Credit Union.
Yeah.
On Telegraph Road presented. Andrea.
Again, three times the term. Okay, so this, this next proposal is for a site plan, not a special land use. This is straightforward permitted use within the B2 zoning classification. So, highlighted on your screen, this is located on the, I guess, north-estherly side of Telegraph Road, in front of the, the Acadia-owned shopping center, where we've got the likes of Home Goods, TJ Maxx. This proposal for the DFCU Credit Union is for a new standalone structure. I highlighted on your screen here, it's one of the outlots that immediately abuts Telegraph Road. And then here is an aerial of the property as well. This was, this has been used in the past for Christmas tree sales. So, Mr. Lutz unfortunately will not be able to continue at least that location, selling his Christmas trees, because the proposal we have before you would be probably a little difficult, unless they could do it in this parking lot. So, the proposal is for a new 3,454-square-foot building with three drive-through lanes. So, the credit union does have access to the drive-through lanes. They are located behind the building, so opposite of Telegraph Road. So, there'll be no visibility from Telegraph Road. Again, this property is located on the south side of Telegraph, or northeasternly, I guess, side of, of Telegraph Road, north of Square Lake. The property is currently vacant, and it's identified as 1.26 acres within the B2 Community Business District. This does comply with our 2007, as reaffirmed in 2022, master plan, which recommends commercial uses on this parcel. So, this does comply with the provisions of our master plan. So, in terms of site circulation and access to the credit union, access to the site is being provided by two drives. However, us that are familiar with that shopping center do know that there's various access points in which you can get into the shopping center. But specifically for this site, they are showing two drives. One would, one of which would be more interior to the shopping center, which would be along the ring road, the interior ring road, which would be to the east of the subject site, as well as there is a, in, there is the second form that's an existing two-way drive along the western lot line, which connects to Telegraph Road. Pedestrian access is provided to the interior of the site with concrete walkways around the proposed building. So, provided on your screen here, we do always have our fire department, fire marshal review any site plans that come before us. And you can see, the applicant has provided a satisfactory truck radius, indicating that there is ability to navigate our largest fire truck through the site, and is satisfactory to the fire department. So, I'm kind of jumping ahead here. Let me continue to go through these, the site plan itself before we get into some of the details. So, the parking lot does show a layout of 30 parking spaces, which does include two barrier-free spaces. The parking requirement for the credit union is one space for one, every 225 square feet, resulting in a requirement of 15 parking spaces. So, clearly, the applicant is above and beyond the required parking by providing the 30 spaces with 15 spaces required. Additionally, our, the site plan does show the ability for up to 13 stacking spaces for the drive-through service. And I want to also say that the parking spaces are designed to comply with the provisions of our zoning ordinance, which is nine feet wide and 20 feet long, and that is provided on the site plan. Just like any site plan that comes before you, it was reviewed for the traffic impact. The traffic impact study was completed by Traffic Analysis and Design Incorporated, and it was reviewed by the Township's Traffic Engineer Fishbeck for performance with the township requirements. In their memo, Fishbeck dated November 12, 2024, it was noted that all the items have been addressed, and that the traffic analysis as provided is supported and satisfactory to Township Traffic Engineer Fishbeck. Also required for a site plan is an 850-square-foot loading space, which has been proposed in the rear of the building, which also require, it was also required by ordinance. And it does meet, they do note that the delivery services will occur after hours. Also, in the rear of the building, closest to the, that ingress and egress drive from Telegraph Road, they do provide a dumpster enclosure, which is also required by our zoning ordinance. And they have provided that, a masonry dumpster enclosure with gates, which also will have a screening vegetation around that dumpster to help soften any appearance of that dumpster enclosure. Again, this, this proposal does meet all the bulk and area and setback requirements within the B2 Community Business District. So, they are not seeking any variances with this proposal, and they do meet all those requirements. A landscape plan has been provided, and it has since been updated. There were some comments that were presented, the Planning Commission, asking the applicant to update some of their canopy trees that are required within that 25-foot greenbelt along Telegraph Road. The landscape, the revised landscape plan was reviewed in an updated report dated January 21, 2025, does conclude that the proposed landscape improvements meet the intent of the zoning ordinance. So, they do meet the requirement in terms of parking lot trees. We do have requirements of parking lot trees that have to be located within the interior of the site and not within setbacks. They do meet the requirement and the caliper requirement that those trees meet a three-inch caliper at the time of planting. And they are proposing a total of six parking lot trees, which does meet the requirements of our ordinance. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. That site plan actually shows a total of eight parking lot trees are being proposed. There is an existing tree in the northwest corner, which is proposed to remain, along with six trees just east of the site. Parking lot islands, which are also required within a parking field, are required to be landscaped, and they have provided some landscape islands within the parking field. So, the applicant has also provided a visual demonstration of some of the species of plantings that they intend to use on the landscape plan. And for the sake of showing the different variety, I have included the slide, which was provided to us by the applicant. So, moving on, ground monomechanicals, there is an area that is proposed to house some ground monomechanicals, which are proposed to the, to the south of the site. Those ground monomechanicals are proposed to be screened with a screen wall that has materials to match the existing building and will be fully obscured from public view. Also want to note that rooftop mechanical units are proposed and are also noted to be screened by decorative metal screen to completely obscure the equipment from view, which is also a requirement of our zoning ordinance. Moving on, this, this site plan, in terms of the building materials, you can see the building elevations provided include the utilization of brick-and-stone coping for the majority of the building. The building also has a black perforated metal panels and cast concrete panels, and a bronze tinted glazing for the windows and entryways. The canopy over the drive-through, which is shown here in this elevation, does include a black metal coping with backlit perforated metal panels, which add an interest in terms of the design. We, I do know that we have the architect here as well that could add any, any commentary as well as it relates to the design of the building. Again, just to note that the, the three drive-up, air, drive-through is located, again, in the rear of the building and will not be seen from Telegraph Road. I do want to note that the parking lot tree, parking lot lighting, which is being proposed, does meet with our photometric plan that was supplied by the applicant. It does show that they do meet the requirements, being mounted in the parking lot no more than 20 feet from grade, and having downward shielded light fixtures in compliance with our ordinance. And you can see highlighted on your screen that the applicant did provide a satisfactory photometric plan, which does indicate no spillover onto adjacent properties. And also here is a site photo of the property as it is in its current, current configuration. Just going back to reviews from our various departments, the fire department did have comments provided within your packet, noting that there will be fire suppression and fire alarm will be required for this project, and that that can be done during the permitting process. Also noted, noting that the fire department connection, the FDC, must have a fire hydrant within 100 feet of it, and placement of the FDC is approved by the Township Consultant AHJ. This can also be done during the permitting process. Police Department having no objections to the proposed project. And then Environmental and Engineering, Engineering Environmental Services noting that both themselves, as well as Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, have reviewed the preliminary site plans with respect to water main, sanitary sewer, stormwater, and general site improvements. HRC recommends approval of the preliminary site plan by the Commission, Planning Commission, and Township Board. And then Engineering and Environmental Services determine that necessary revisions have been made, and it also recommends approval of the site plan. So, with that, I can answer any questions. This did have an opportunity to go, go to our design review board back in, on January 15, 2025, meeting with a favorable recommendation forwarded on to the Planning Commission with a three-to-zero motion. And then moving on to the Planning Commission, where there were a list of five conditions in which they made their recommendation on to the Township Board. And those of the five, the four conditions still remain in your packet, because the one condition of requiring the revised landscape plan has since been addressed and is no longer listed as a requirement within your packet. So, with that, I would ask that you take any public comment. We do have represent, representation here from DFCU Credit Union, and I do have listed in there the four conditions in which you should consider. in there the four conditions in which you should consider potential approval.
Thank you, Andrea.
Just for clarity, this is just a site plan, not a special land use, there's no public hearing.
Correct. Then I apologize about the public, public hearing. You're right, it is a, is a public hearing, a public meeting.
And I know our applicant here, would they like to come up and have anything to say? And we can open up to the board for questions or comments.
Shirley has something, she always has something to say.
Come on up to the microphone, please.
My name's Edward Ceylon, I'm the Vice President of Facilities with DFCU Financial, and I'd like to thank everyone for having us tonight, all the hard work the township's done to get us here. That's a great site, it's a great community, and we're excited to be here. We're our CEO, our CFO, the residents of the township, our Chairman of the Board is the Mayor of the neighboring Sylvan Lake, and today is our 75th anniversary.
Nice.
Thank you. We are one of the largest credit unions in the nation, and we have given back just shy of half a billion dollars to our membership in special dividends in the last 17 years. Our partners at Our Concepts, we build first-class buildings, we maintain them in first-class condition, and we will be a productive member of the business community. So any questions you have, I will turn it over to the experts, unless you have one specifically for me.
Thank you.
We just wanted to make one clarification. I'm Shirley from Our Concepts and Andrew from Our Concepts. In terms of the descriptive of the metal panels, they're not black, yet they're, they're dark bronze.
There you go.
Which we have a sample, so we just didn't want you to think it was a stark black. It's a dark bronze, it's a little bit more neutral in color that blends in with the requirements of the, of the, the area. So right there, it's just, it's a bronze. So I just, again, that was a concerning descriptive, so I just wanted to make sure we caught that. And if there's anything else you wanted to show, but we're, we're excited about it, and this is our new prototype, this will be the first one of the new brand, and you guys get to be the first, so.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No, just gonna say it's a very attractive building, did a great design on it, we're happy to be the prototype for it because it really is extremely attractive, great materials, and we should be proud of it.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Yeah, it's a great proposal. Andrea did a great job, she's probably all worn out after one after another. Yeah, that's, it's a great location, and although we're eating up the tree farms, I can tell you that I know one of the tree farm lots may be moving to Bowers Farm. So find another home in the township and welcome to the township.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks for investing in the township, we're looking forward to having you guys here, and we're excited to be the first one of this design and hopefully the, you know, the statement piece for you guys for a while.
Thank you.
I have a question about the glazing. Is it reflective or is it tinted?
Tinted, right? I think it's just, yeah.
Yeah, it's a bronze tint, yeah.
I was just concerned about sun reflection.
Yeah.
From the reflective coatings.
Yeah, it is now like a mirrored finish, like think of the high-rises in Southfield have like a reflective, like a mirror look. This is just bronze tinted, so when the lights are on inside, it might have a slightly warmer appearance than without the tinting, but it's very subtle.
Okay, and then, and then are you using also low reflective, low E glass on the inside or no?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. The last question I have is, on the current site photos, there were some trees along the edge of the property. Will you try to retain as many of those as you can?
The ones that are on the adjacent, kind of, Michael, please.
So the ones that are located, the existing ones that you're talking about?
Yes.
Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, Richard Hodak from Grissom, Metz, Andrews Associates, we're the landscape architects. So everything that's shown that's retained to the south of the property is on the neighboring adjacent property, so that will all remain. There is one existing tree, I think Andrea had noted up on the northeast corner behind one of the, where the proposed dumpsters at, and that's.
That would have to be removed, okay.
Yeah, way in the back corner.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? We'll entertain a motion.
So moved, as long as it is in compliance with everything that the Planning Commission said, as well as all the, our departments as part of the building process.
And seeking signage approval from the Design Review Board.
And of course that as well.
And one quick clarification, the notation for, at the end of the memo, also mentioned special land use, so we're just approving a site plan. When you say so moved.
Yeah.
Not, there's no special land use.
Just the site plan.
Correct.
Okay, and there are support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Bloomfield Township. All right, item number nine, consider adoption of special assessment deferment program presented by our Treasurer, Michael Showstack.
Thank you, Supervisor McCready. So it's kind of apropos that this is coming up tonight, since we just approved or moved along the process in SAD earlier. So this idea has been percolating for quite a while, as I've seen these SADs come through here and getting more and more expensive, and talking to the residents that that affects. And I would, you know, thinking about what can we do, I mean, we, we can't, we can't influence construction costs, we can't influence interest rates, things like that, but I wanted to see if there was something that we could do to, to help the people out that, that truly need it. You know, and I was thinking that, you know, I invest the township's funds in US government debt. Why not invest a small piece of those funds in our residents, in our ability to support residents that will struggle or are struggling to pay these hefty assessments? So what I've proposed here in the, in the packet is a program that will allow residents who qualify by virtue of a hardship to defer payment of an annual assessment until a later date. I want to take one step back. So one of the things that we do to help make these assessments, these, these assessments more affordable is we, we allow for financing. We allow 15 years for a road assessment, 20 years for a water and sewer assessment. And so that, you know, and we, and we split it up evenly over that time period, so that the resident can pay back principal, and, and we do charge interest according to the law. And the township decides and has historically used bond financing to, to pay for those, to allow for that payment plan, although we are not required to by any means, we just have chosen to do that for our own liquidity. The other thing I wanted to add is that we also offer for property taxes, we offer a hardship exemption for residents who qualify, again, by virtue of a hardship. That hardship is defined by state law, and that allows them to basically not pay property tax in a given year if they qualify. Now, the, the qualification is extremely strict, and so there were only 19 taxpayers last year who qualified for this exemption across the township. But that is something that is available for residents that meet the hardship guidelines, and those guidelines, as I said, are set by state law. But what I'm proposing here is our program, so it's allowed under the law that we can do this, but it's our program to design and to set the terms. And so we can define hardship however we want, we can define the terms in terms of interest or no interest, how many years, all, all of it is totally up to us. And so I've put together a proposal that I've spent a lot of time on that I think is very fair, but of course, as a board, ultimately, it's our decision to adopt it or, or not, and under what terms. So we currently have 24 SADs in repayment since 2007. We have three more coming, right, one that we approved tonight or that we moved along the process tonight, and then two more that we're going to approve in April for the village, for this year's two village gold and yellow sections. So right now, we have 1,456 homeowners who pay an annual special assessment for either road or water and sewer. And, you know, that will grow, obviously these two village sections are big, et cetera. And most people don't prepay, we, I've seen prepayments at about 10%, so that people who pay the whole assessment off upfront has been about 10%. So 90% are choosing to finance it over the terms that we provide. So as I said, this program, I, I put in your packet, hopefully you got a chance to review it. Basically, as I said, we allow residents, each year they would have to apply for that year's assessment, and they would defer that assessment until a later date. Now, they would repay us either when they sell their property or transfer their property, refinance their mortgage, or after 10 years. And I've chosen 10 years to allow people to kind of recover a little bit, but I think we do have to have some kind of deadline on it. Now, there's also language in here that says that the treasurer can extend that on a year-by-year basis, provided they continue to qualify for the hardship. So, and they would repay it with 3% interest, simple interest, non-compounding, for the number of years that it's outstanding. Of course, they could pay it back at any time if their situation changes, and as I said, they would have to reapply every year to reaffirm that they qualify for the hardship in order to get the deferment. I've defined hardship using four criteria. The first one is income, and that the assessment that they have to pay as a percent of their income would have to exceed a certain threshold, and that threshold would be based on the number of members of their household. So somebody who has a larger household has a lower threshold, somebody who has a larger assessment, you know, would, would have a, you know, there's more consideration given to them for qualification versus somebody who has a lower assessment. So that's criteria one is income, criteria two would be a max income, I think we set a maximum income of 150,000, household income. Again, we can adjust that, I'm open to your feedback, but I think that that's a fair number because it represents the median income in the township according to the census. And the third criteria would be assets. If somebody has a low income but they're sitting on a lot of assets, they shouldn't qualify, and now I'm not including retirement accounts or life insurance or anything like that, that's really not liquid, that they don't have access to, but other things that they do have access to, obviously cash and securities and things like that, they, you know, they should be able, that, that would mean that they can afford to pay the assessment, they, they should pay it. And then the last criteria is that the combined balance of their mortgages and the amount of the deferment, the assessment, does not exceed the value of the property, so we're not underwater by giving them the deferment. And we would, we would record a lien on their property, so of course, they couldn't sell the property without paying us back or refinance it. So those are really the, the key points that I wanted to address. You know, the document that I put in the packet is a little bit more detailed, but I'm open to comments and feedback, and so what I'm asking tonight is for the board to adopt the special assessment deferment program and to allocate or authorize $150,000 for this year, for the first year. It would be up to, obviously, it depends on how many people apply and qualify, we would work with our wonderful cable and community relations staff to get the word out. Also, we have 1,456 people who currently pay an assessment, we know who they are, so we can, and I plan to just send them a letter, so we would be able to get to them that way as well. So that's the proposal, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
I have a couple of things on my, Michael. So first, I think this is a great program, I know you actually talked about this for a while, so the fact that we were able to actually kind of get this in motion and put it in front of us, I really appreciate it, and I think a lot of our residents will. When we talked to the people about South Bloomfield Highlands, a lot of them came in and, you know, whether they knew they needed it or not, nobody questioned the need of the water, it was could they afford it? And this provides them an avenue to be able to live in their home and still make that appropriate investment. So I greatly appreciate it, and I know it took a ton of work, a ton of research to get here. So first, thank you for that.
Thank you.
You had mentioned talking about retirement accounts associated with the total assets, and the memo it talks about investment account holding, stocks, bonds, mutual funds. So the question I have is if somebody is just a social security recipient, but they have a million dollars in their 401K, they could still qualify for this because they'd be under the income threshold and they don't have liquid assets, even though they may be of age to access those retirement accounts. Is that correct, or is that, is that our intent?
I, that's a fair, that's a fair question. Under the way that it's worded, you know, the retirement accounts would be excluded, so if somebody was of age and they had a million dollars sitting in a retirement account that they could access, you know, theoretically, you know, we can make a decision as a, as a matter of policy if we want to require them to access that or if we want to exclude it. And I'm open to modifying it to say that, you know, because you, you've got to say that if it's a retirement account, you have to be of age.
Yes.
Right, but then at the same time, do we want to be, you know, you know, isolating our senior citizens?
And I just wanted to make sure, as a board, we understand that.
Yes, so as a board, the way it's written, retirement accounts do not qualify even if they have access to them.
So I just want to make sure, so that we understand how we're wording this, because again, the goal is to make sure that residents that are on fixed income or lower income or below our average have access to this program.
But if the, if the, if the investments, the securities are in an account that's not a retirement account, just a regular.
Correct.
You know, stock account or a regular investment account, that would qualify as an asset for this, for this program.
Yeah, again, I just, I would like, whatever the board wants to decide on that or talk about, besides that, again, I am totally in favor in this, I think this is a great program, and I'm so glad they brought this to us, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mike, I want to thank you for putting this together, and I know you've been thinking about this for a long time, and I think it's, it's a great program, well thought out, and the way you prepared it really is very thorough. Certainly, I do support it as written, and, you know, it could always be adjusted in the future if issues come up, but as is, I think it's a great start.
So I appreciate it too. I know we've seen so many SADs come through in my time on the board, and it can be very, very financially stressful, and we saw that especially in Bloomfield Highlands, you know, it's water, it's not just a crumbling road. So I think it's an awesome program, because it's like a safety net, because so that, you know, there's been a few people that'll come to us and say, well, I might have to just sell my house because I can't afford this. And I like the parameters that you set up, I think Chris's question is, is very well thought out. You know, if somebody has a million dollars and it's accessible, that would be something that would be part of, I guess, the picture, and the 150,000 is a good benchmark to start with, and I guess if we don't have enough people, because the assessments are, you know, sometimes three, four thousand a year, it's, that would be a lot of residents helped. If we don't have to loan it all out, because there aren't people that have qualified, then I guess we don't, but I think it's an awesome pilot program, and I thank you for it.
Yeah, and I would just, just to piggyback on that, you know, we, a couple of us have mentioned the South Bloomfield Highlands neighborhood, but we talked to people in the village. You know, the village, one of them, I forgot which one it is here, blew, their assessment's almost $5,000, and there are people that have lived in the village for 40 or 50 years, their houses paid off, their taxes are low because they've been capped, and yet now we're in the $5,000 estimate, I mean, that's a, that's a huge, huge number, so I, I would just add that, you know, while it's great that we think about the Bloomfield Highlands neighborhood, but there are people even in the village that may qualify. And, and I think that, you know, the other, I mean, the other, the other issue that we have, that I wanted to bring up was, so we have the hardship exemption, which is income-based. We also have, again, under state law, disabled veterans are automatically exempt from property tax.
100%.
100%, right?
Yeah, you have to be 100% VA disabled.
Yes, I mean, we, we require documentation, right, from the VA that says you're a disabled veteran, and then you're just, nope, no property tax, but that doesn't apply to assessments. So I, there's a guy that came in this year, was a disabled vet. So I, there's a guy that came in this year, was a disabled vet who lives in the village. And he's like, I've never, I haven't paid property, you know, whatever, but I got to pay this, you know, 3, $3,500 assessment, you know, is a big deal. And so, you know, as I thought about this, I said, well, I put in here that if you qualify for the hardship exemption, you're automatically covered for the assessment, right? Because those requirements are so strict that if you qualify for that, you're going to qualify for this. So we don't even need to spend time on it. We'll just, you just qualify for it. But do we want to automatically qualify the disabled vets? Or do we want to make them submit an application and see if they qualify using the criteria that we have in the program? And the way that I came down on it, I said, you know, you know, I want to help out the disabled vets. But, you know, I think we should just as stewards of township resources that they should qualify by income. And if they do, happy to give it to them. But, you know, so unless the board feels strongly about that and wants to add that and is an automatic, you know, I think that if if they qualify using our criteria, then they should get it. But otherwise, it's not automatic. So.
No, I appreciate that, and I agree with you. Because, you know, if they are a disabled veteran and they're not paying the property taxes, that's that's great. That's one break. But you might have somebody who can well still afford this and somebody else that cannot. So we just, I think we would still need to look at every case individually. And if they still qualified, they qualify. So thank you again.
I have another question. Like, is there any, can we review this or make changes to it every year? Or is that our intent to? What's the intent going forward?
So I put in here that the board will conduct an annual review of the program's effectiveness and consider adjustments as needed. So at least definitely after the first year, I'll come back a year from now and report, here's how it went, et cetera. Do we need more money, less money? Do we need to change the criteria because not enough people are qualifying? Or, you know, the 150,000, maybe that's too low. But then I just thought about, I said, well, if you, you know, we've got an income of over 150,000, is that something that we do want to defer or can you make it work? I don't know. I mean, I went back and forth on that one. But ultimately, I decided on 150 because it's the median income. And, you know, we we can always come back to the board and adjust it later. So if that's not enough, but I just thought that that would be a fair place to start. And so, yes, I did build into the program that we would have an annual review. And at least after the first year, I'm going to come back and present to the board, here's how it went and if there are any changes. And and there's nothing to preclude me from coming back earlier if I think something needs to be changed earlier.
No, again, I appreciate that because again, not only is this new, but again, we want to see, our intent is to help as many as we can.
Yeah.
As long as we have the money, right? Like, invest in our people, invest in the people that invest in us.
Right. I mean, I mean, look, we're charging interest, right? So if, you know, to the other residents of the the community that say we're using, you know, township dollars that are not being invested in, you know, bonds or something like that, well, or money markets, like, well, okay, so this is earning some interest and 3% is around what we're, you know, probably going to be earning going forward on our on our liquid investments. And, you know, we invest in the US government, why not invest in our residents? So.
Thank you, Michael. It's very nice. Any other comments or questions for Michael?
I want to sort of piggyback on that. You know, this is great work, Michael. I appreciate it. The leadership you've shown on this is incredible. You know, it to me strikes the right balance on all points, thoughtful, fair. You know, it's it's not, it's not, it's it's just appropriately generous and but not overly so. It's just a good example of good government, I think.
Thank you.
And I appreciate all the work on it and leadership you've shown on it. And I support it the way it is and and also support your flexibility with regard to the contents you propose and the oversight that you've included in the policy with regard to the board. So all around, I mean, you know, I'm just so happy that we have, we as a board have have this in front of us to to adopt, to help our residents and that we're doing it in a fiscally responsible way.
Any other further comments? That'll entertain a motion.
I do have one on the household gross income.
We have two criteria, percentage based on gross income with family members, then we have a dollar value. There, I like the percentage on gross income because it affects cash flow. And I don't think we should have a cap on the gross income because circumstances change. You never know who comes in, starts living with you because your son or daughter lost their job. I would prefer to have that removed and just focus on percentage of gross income.
So you're suggesting we remove the cap on the on the income, the maximum?
Yes, because of the percentage calculations that we have in there.
Right. So I, I mean, that's fair. My thinking in including that is just, you know, because if you if you go by these percentages and you look at some of the higher, the higher assessments, you know, you could back into it and say that, you know, in that, in the blue section of the village, for example, if somebody's got five, you know, spouse and three kids, and so they're five people, and we use 1.5% as the as the threshold at $5,000 or 4,500 or whatever their annual assessment is. I mean, they would qualify it, you know, 225 or 250 or something like that. And then it's like, well, how do we justify somebody who, you know, makes $250,000, say we're giving them a, you know, a deferment? And so, you know, because if they if they have that much income, they should be able to, you know, work things out. Now, again, I'm open to it. I mean, if the board says, hey, let's just scrap the cap and just go purely based on the percentages, I'm fine with that. But, you know, so I'll leave it to the board to decide. I just proposed the cap because I thought, you know, once you get to those higher incomes, you know, it it it's a little bit easier to maneuver your finances to 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 pay a bill, a tax bill or an assessment versus somebody who makes, let's say, $65,000 to to try to cover.
Which is the annual household income in the US, I believe, right? 65 or 66,000?
Somewhere that, yeah, the median, yeah. But, I mean, granted, this is Bloomfield Township, you know, that's not, that's not the income here. I mean, the median income is 150,000 according to the census. And so, which means that half of our residents make more and half of our residents make less. And so.
But that can be skewed because we have some residents who make so much money that it.
Well, this is the median, not the average.
Okay.
Median, yeah, so this is the median. So it's exactly the 50% point, so half make more, half make less. You know, I mean, Mark, I hear what you're saying and I'll, you know, I'll defer to the board in terms of what you guys want to do. If you want to pull that out, that's.
So I appreciate Mark's question, but, you know, I think the biggest hardship is when I saw some families in the school district do this during the recession. You lose your job or your business fails. Well, if you lost your job or your business failed and you had been making more than 150, you aren't making 150 anymore. So I think it's kind of a moot point because I think that's the biggest, you know, quick hardship that somebody is going to face. And I think the 150 is is, you know, quite a generous marker. And, yeah, I think it's good as it's written.
One thing I'll add that I did build into it that says that that the treasurer, it's number three on page two, the treasurer may waive one requirement or qualification if the resident can demonstrate extenuating circumstances. So in a situation where somebody's got, like you described, maybe, you know, a child or that, you know, some extenuating circumstance that, hey, their income's above 150, but this is why they are really struggling, then I would have the ability to say, okay, I'm going to waive the $150,000 requirement for this resident as long as they meet the percentage and the the asset test. The other thing is that this, in order to qualify, you have to provide documentation. You have to provide your current tax return. You have to provide a personal financial statement. And let's say you have a business that's failing and sometimes, and and I, in my consulting life, have known a few of those, they tend to not pay taxes for several years, and they don't have a current tax return, but they clearly have a hardship. And so this would give me the ability to waive that requirement to say, okay, you've got your businesses suffering. You can prove to me through your bank statements or through your other things that you have this hardship and but you can't provide a current tax return. So again, that 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 flexibility is built in there for for me. So does that address your concern?
I just wanted to have the discussion.
Okay.
And again, it still provides us an annual look at this anyway.
Yes.
Each year, you as a treasurer can look at it and decide if you're still going to defer or not.
Yeah, I mean, you know, let's say, I mean, I'm going to send out the letters next month, right? And and let people know. And then if people call up and say, hey, I can't qualify under these terms and I think we've made it too restrictive, I'm going to come back to the board in a couple of months and say, this is the feedback I'm getting. We're too restrictive. We need to, you know, the the purpose of this program is to help people. And if we've made it too restrictive, then we're not serving the purpose.
And again, by, it's a great start and as you're very flexible with this. You made it clear whether it's one year or if you need to come back earlier. Plus, you have the opportunity to for exemption. So I think everything is built in there for now to start with. And as any potential issues come up, I know that you'll come back to the board and we can discuss it.
Yep.
All right, if that'll entertain a motion to approve?
I've got a few more questions. When does the program start?
If approved tonight, it would go into effect for this coming tax year. So I would send out letters to the residents who have SADs, probably, like I said, in March. And I'm going to work with our cable and community relations department to advertise the program as well. And they would have to apply by June 30th, I believe. Where is it here? June 30th, yeah. So they would have to apply by June 30th. That gives us, and I'm going to work with the assessor's office to qualify the applicants, and they would get notified by the fall. And it would go into effect because they would get a an assessment on their winter tax bill next year. And so.
So it's really a year from now?
Yes, it's next year's winter. It's not the, it's not the tax that we're collecting today. No, it's next year.
Summer tax for everybody else.
Right, but the the assessments come on the winter tax bill. So that gives us, like I said, if we send out the applications and get that done, people apply by June 30th. We have a couple of months to process, get more information if we need it, make decisions. And then next winter, for the winter tax, they would have the assessment removed from their bill.
You mail those out, what, in November?
They go out in November, yes. Then in November.
That'll give you enough time and the residents enough time.
Well, for anybody listening, thousands, I'm sure.
Millions.
Millions. The SADs, just you just build once a year. It's not like a monthly or quarterly, so it's a once a year. So we would be really ready for that.
Oh, yeah, it comes out on the winter tax bill, so that's why I wanted to get it out now. We'll get out, like I said, next month. We'll, once we get through our tax season and get past settlement and all the things that we need to do to wrap up this year's tax season, we will get letters out to the residents, the 1,500 or so residents. And then when we approve, assuming we approve the two village SADs coming up in April, I'll notify them. And so they'll be able to apply and applications will be due by June 30th.
Will the, so this will be in next year's budget?
So because this is not technically an expense because we're going to get the money back, it doesn't affect the budget.
And how will the SAD payments be on the bonds be made?
The township will use general fund dollars to cover the assessments that are deferred. So that's why we're earning interest on the general fund dollars, just like we would if they were invested in in any other, you know, bond investment.
And is the 3% in addition to what's paid out on the bond?
Well, so the assessment includes an interest rate, okay? And then each year that assessment is paid, that portion of the assessment is paid with the interest. So we're going to cover the principal and the interest for that year. And then we will add interest to that assessment amount. So if your annual assessment, let's say, principal and interest is $3,000, we're going to cover your $3,000 for the year, and then we will charge you 3% of that $3,000 until you pay it back.
So it'll, the 3% will also be on the 1% fee that the township charges as well?
The 1%, well, so it's separate, the 1% is for the SAD for the district. And it's 1% above the bond rate. But remember, the township doesn't keep that money. That money would go back to the district if there's money left over when everything, when all the bonds have been paid off. So that 1% is purely there to protect us in the event people prepay, and then we're stuck paying interest on the bond. So that 1% is not money that we're going to keep. So that's that that's separate. But the interest, the the payment that the resident has to make for each year, principal and interest, that's the amount that's being deferred, and we're charging them interest on that payment. And then that, you know, so that 3% is 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 for the general funds money essentially, which is why it's not a budget item because, I mean, you can think of it essentially like a loan, right? We're loaning the money and.
But we still have to have the 1% in case people prepay.
Right, but the 1% is part of the act, is how the is how the payments are designed. And then one, but we're paying that payment for that year, and then we're charging them interest until they repay it. And there's a mechanism for how they repay it, whether they sell their house, they transfer it, they refinance it, or after 10 years.
As an example, Michael, on the SAD for the South Bloomfield Highlands water, you had many people come in and pay it all upfront that you didn't expect, right?
Well, it was about 10%.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I, again, given what everyone's, you know, we always think about with the South Bloomfield Highlands, like, it was a little surprising to me with the number of people that we got that paid it up all upfront.
And all the SADs.
But it was about 10%, which is consistent with our other SADs.
SADs, yeah. Right. So the 1% is built in for those that come at any time during the 15-year SAD program that prepay.
Yes.
We still have to pay that interest on the bond.
Correct. And so that 1% is built in to give us cushion to be able to make the bond payments.
Right.
But at the end of the, when the district is closed out after the bonds are paid, if there's money left over, that gets returned.
To the residents that are paying on the SAD.
Who paid on the SAD, correct.
It goes to the household.
It goes to the owner of the house. So I mean, if somebody pays for 14 years and then sells their house and somebody moves in in that last year, and there's a refund, whoever the new owner is, is going to get the refund.
And it's a totally separate issue, has nothing to do with what you're doing because there's a SAD policy that lays that out.
Correct.
It's not on the table today.
My question was if we're collecting the 3% on the one as well.
It's kind of an interesting point, though, because.
Yes, and I guess the answer to your question is yes.
And how does this, how is it tracked if someone sells their home?
So we're going to file a lien or record a lien on their property. And when they go to, when somebody goes to sell their house, they have a title company that ensures the title transfer. And they're going to see that the lien is there, just as if there was a mortgage lien. And they're going to contact us, in the lien, it's going to say, contact Bloomfield Township Treasurer's Office for payoff information. They'll contact my office and we'll give them a payoff, and that will get paid as part of closing. They can't transfer the house without paying us off.
Would they only have to pay off what's the township has contributed and then the new owner could pick up the remaining payments on the SAD?
Yes, but again, I think you're conflating two things. One is that if if somebody sells their house 10 years into an SAD and there's five years left, and then the new owner comes in and pays those five years. But what we're talking about is what we've what we've loaned essentially to the resident for their, to cover their assessment that they that we.
Correct, and I just wanted to clarify that it's only to recoup
Yes.
the 3% interest.
Correct.
That's due to the township plus the.
So just to give you another example, let's say in the instance that trustee Murray brought up that somebody loses their job. And so they, for one year, don't have a job and they they qualify for the hardship. We would defer that year's assessment. And then the following year, they have a job and they make enough money, and then they wouldn't qualify. So we only deferred one assessment. That deferred assessment would sit there for 10 years or until they sell their house, accruing 3% interest. Now, of course, they could come in and, you know, pay it off if they don't want to accrue the interest. But they would, when they go to sell their house or after 10 years, they would have to pay it off with with interest. So at closing for selling their house, they would only have to pay what they've deferred, not the rest of the assessment. That's a separate.
Okay.
Makes for interesting negotiations if you're buying a house and you have the lien on it.
Well, it's just, you know, it's, again, if you're selling your house and, you know, when you're, when you go to sell your house, your real estate agent will typically give you a closing projection of how much money you're going to walk away with. They just got to include the assessment and or the the lien that we have and how much it's going to cost them so that they they plan ahead that that money's not going to be available to them. So that they, they plan ahead that that money's not going to be available to them because it's going to get paid to us at closing by the title company.
Right.
And then how will we notify residents, uh, regarding, uh, the lien and their current balance?
Good question. I mean, we, they'd be able to call anytime and, and get information. I don't, I didn't contemplate sending out like annual statements or anything like that. But depending on the number of people that, that, that do that, I mean, we could, we could consider that.
Would that be noted maybe on their property tax bill when we send it out that there's a lien on it with a balance?
Well, if the lien is filed on a property, the homeowner is going to have a notification of that lien from the register of deeds. They'll get a copy.
Well, they have, I mean, the homeowner has to sign the lien.
I know.
Right, so, but in terms of, I think Mark's question was about their ongoing balance. And again, I didn't contemplate that we would be sending out annual statements. But a resident could certainly call up and say, hey, how much do I owe on my deferment? Oh, okay. So thank you to my deputies who's, uh, giving me some information here that as, as we move to BSN A Cloud, which is a more robust software program, we could potentially put it in there. I don't want to commit to that. But, um, there may be opportunities to get it into the cloud. So that when somebody looks up their house, they could see it. But again, I, we're, we're still, today was literally the first day that we were on the cloud. And as anybody who's worked with, uh, IT and software implementations, it's always a.
Work to be done.
It's always a little bit, uh, bumpy, so, um, so.
Michael, this is very exciting in, in the sense of helping the residents because we all go through ups and downs. And, um, it really helps out. And, um, I want to thank you for putting this together. I'm enjoying hearing the questions and the conversation. Mark, do you have any further questions?
Could we include a statement on the, uh, a separate statement with the, uh, property tax bill?
That comes with it?
Yeah.
It just seems like a, and, and, I don't know, it's an administrative burden. So we're, you know, putting on costs to the, to the, you know, the treasurer's department to do that. It's, I think it's on the homeowner. They, they know they've got this, they know the 3% loan, they can call anytime. I just wouldn't want to add a layer of bureaucracy and burden on top of the.
With the BSA program.
Yeah.
Well, it'll show up on it.
It may, it may. So let, let me just, um, I'll add this. So we can't stick it in the property tax bill.
Okay.
Okay, because we mail out 16 or so thousand bills and we obviously don't stuff them ourselves. We have a, a printer that prints and stuffs and mails them. So to pick out 30 or so that have this, it would be impossible, needle in a haystack. Could we send out separate statements? Again, let's, let's do this. Let's put a pin in that and say, um, when I come back in a year after the first year of this, see how many there are. And then if it makes sense at that point to, to, that we want to send, spend the time and the money, I, I mean, obviously not, postage is that expensive. But, you know, uh, to send out annual statements, um, we could talk about that at that point. So let's just, let's, let's, let's see how, how we go, you know, in the first year.
I think that's actually a really good question though, because, you know, people lose track of how much they owe. And if they're getting older and they're debating whether they should sell, to once a year, get a, a, a letter. Like you said, if you can't put it in the tax bill, then separately. And it's probably not going to be a ton of people.
Yeah, I, I.
To let them know where they stand.
Yeah.
Like, you know, this is where you stand. You owe, you know, $3,500 plus 3% interest for this year and that year. You don't qualify any longer. This year, your payoff would be like an annual, like, you know, like an annual, uh, bill.
I just think we're getting into the weeds. I know the treasurer's department is going to do a professional job, you know, servicing the residents on an ongoing basis like they do every day. And if we just could sit here and get into the weeds, every little thing they should or shouldn't do is too much.
It's really, it's a great idea.
Let's do it.
If we're ready, I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve as presented.
Well, just like, any other questions or comments, anybody? Nope. Okay.
Support.
Well, go ahead with your motion.
I make a motion that we approve the special assessment deferment program from, as presented.
And support.
And authorize $150,000?
And authorize up to $150,000 as.
Towards the program.
Uh, towards the burden on hardship applicants.
Shouldn't that be done in the budget meeting?
No.
It's not a budget item. It's an accounts receivable. So it shows up in the accounts receivable section as an income. It's not a budget item, we're not spending.
It will be repaid.
Okay. Yeah, so it's essentially like making an investment. So it's, it's not.
So you're investing in a marketable security, but it ties up general fund reserves.
Correct.
So, um, that's my concern.
Well, we're not talking about, you know, I mean, $150,000 I don't think is.
That's a small investment for a township.
I, it's not, I want it properly, properly assessed or, uh, properly tracked because, um, it impacts balances on the accounts and it restricts fund reserves. So I know that it'll be properly tracked. At the same time, uh, the board needs to be aware of how much is being allocated, especially with transfers.
Yearly, he's committed to come back and provide a report. It's there. But you've got a good question, I mean, but it's been covered, discussed, covered.
Yeah, with motion and support.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Congratulations, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, moving on to item number 10. We removed from the consent agenda, approved board minutes for February 10th, 2025. Mark, I think you had a question about that?
Yes, I do. First, Dirk had mentioned a, um, uh, an email that I received from the Department of Treasury during his comment on, uh, item number five. I would like that email included in the, um, uh, minutes. So therefore I move to, uh, make a motion to, uh, amend the minutes and add the email.
I have a comment before we finish the motion.
Okay, let him, let him finish though.
So, well, yeah, we wanted to go to a motion, I, I, a comment on that. The, the, i- if the item were presented to the, to the entire board that you're talking about, or if the item was, was presented on a, on a PowerPoint, it would be included. I wasn't given a copy of the letter that you're talking about. I've never seen the letter. I don't know what you're talking about. And so it's just not something that goes in the minutes because it was not, uh, it wasn't even discussed or distributed to the board.
It was his opinion that he, he read.
Then I don't see where it says it in the minutes.
Right, so then the, that record is there.
It's in the video. And I ha, I handed, uh.
But the video is not the minutes.
The video is referenced in the minutes because the intent of the minutes, the minutes only reflect actions. And we do not record every conversation or note or, or point that people make. That would be impossible, which is why we, we post the, the full video and a, and a link, a hyperlink is in the minutes. And it's notated out, so you can quickly go right to item five and you can see exactly what Mark Antokley said, or I said, or anybody else. And then we also avoid the idea that I'm paraphrasing, you know, what someone said. And then we're talking about whether or not I correctly paraphrized, paraphrased supervisor, um, McCready or whatever. So the, the minutes talk about the action, provide a summary of the point. And does include all, uh, materials that were in a presentation. And that, that item was not, so it's, that's why it's not included.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Was there anything else on that, like in number 10?
Yes, uh, there is. When Dirk discussed the, uh, at the bottom of, uh, section five, Dirk did discuss the quarterly financial requirements. And he made a statement saying that the township meets the minimum quarterly requirements. And he also stated that the township is not required to meet best practices recommended by the Michigan Department of Treasury.
Correct.
So I would like that added to the minutes as well.
Again, I think that's another statement that he was making, not an action item, right?
Right, it's not an action item. It's, it's a discussion point. Discussion points are not included in the minutes. You know, rather, uh, the link to the meeting is there. They can see the entire statement that he made easily by, you know, when you pull this up online.
It says in detail, he opined that the township is in compliance with all legal requirements.
Yes, that's true.
Of the Michigan Public Act. And he, and he also stated that the township is not required to meet best practices. He also made that statement.
Right, it's a statement.
So then why do we put that he opined?
Because we ask him for legal opinions. He's, he's, we decide policy or best practices.
Yeah, and that's part of his legal opinion. That was part of his legal opinion.
Well, I mean, I guess I disagree. I mean, the exact wording is in the, is in the video. You could, you can see it in the video.
Okay, Mark, and if you'd like, you can make a motion to add it to the minutes.
I, I moved to amend the minutes by adding the following to, at the end of, uh, the first paragraph of section five. The township is not required to meet best practices recommended by the Michigan Department of Treasury.
Okay, is there support? Okay, there's no support.
So let the record reflect that the, uh, motion was made and there was no support?
Correct.
Could you reread the motion for me?
No, I cannot repeat your motion. It's on video, it's recorded, you know, we will write it down in the minutes.
You will write it down in the minutes, okay. So the next.
So now we move on to item number 11.
Wait, I'm, I'm not finished.
Okay.
There's also, the board also discussed additional contribution to other post-employment benefits, OPEB, to the current budget year.
Item five still?
This is item five, the last paragraph, uh, the third paragraph, um, of the current year desirable because it was funding obligations and the need to anticipate what future costs will be. I don't think that's an accurate statement. I did mention that, uh, page 92 of the township audit, I did mention contributions being made. And, uh, Michael said that the contributions are not consistent with how the township internally views it because the benefit payments are paid directly. So if the audit is inconsistent with the internal views, that's problematic.
I don't think we've run into that problem.
Well, we just did.
No, I don't think we did.
I disagree. That you're, that's your conclusion.
But, no, I don't think we've had the same, uh, comment from our auditor that, that I've been made aware.
Well, I believe it's problematic because you have a financial statement on page 92. I have a copy of it right here. And it goes from 2018 through 2024. So we have two, multiple clerks, if anyone would like to see it. The contributions are significantly larger when that, what the township represents. And, uh, the benefit payouts are seen as going through the fund. So, um, again, uh, if internally our view is different, why isn't it reflected in the audit? I believe that's problematic. It's either problematic for the township or the auditor.
Unfortunately, our, our fi- financial director is not here to address this. So, uh, if, we can have to have him go back and give us an opinion on it then. And give our chance, our treasurer a chance to look at it as well. We can look at it. Was there anything else in, for item number 10?
Well, if, if that's the case, then we should table the minutes until the treasurer and the financial.
I'm not going to table the minutes, but I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
I will take, then I'll make a motion to amend it.
Okay, as you stated.
I'm, I may, um, I, I moved to amend the minutes by removing the following text. The board also discussed additional contributions to other post-employment benefits, OPEB, for the current budget year, desirable because it was funding obligations and the need to anticipate what future costs will be. And adding the following. Members of the Board of Trustees advise that page 92 of the township audit for the financial year ending on March 31, 2024, does not reflect the township's internal view of con, on contributions to the other post-employment benefits, OPEB. So to remove and to add.
Okay, is there any support? Okay, there's no support, Mark, so the motion fails.
That's, that's fine. Let the record reflect that the motion was made and there was no support.
And then is there a motion to approve, uh, item number 10 as stated from the agenda? Support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Passes six to one. All right, now item 11, uh, Mark, approve amendment to Village Police 2025 budget. You had a question on that as well?
Yes, um, I, uh, because of the ne- negative balance. So there was a negative balance in the budget. And there are no fund balances listed.
Okay.
So, um.
So this is, this item is the budget for the town, village, their police department. It's 100% funded by the village and, and simply, uh, is not, and no township funds are expended on this whatsoever. The, it's a complete pass through, has been indicated. The, the, the amount of the, of the fund balance is indicated in the memo of $566,000. Any other questions?
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to approve as stated in the agenda, item number 11.
So moved.
All in fa, uh, support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item number 12, approve payroll and vouchers. Mark, you had a question on that as well?
Yes, um, I went and looked at the new system that was implemented. I still can't find where the payroll, uh, funds came from. So, um, and my concern is the, uh.
This was the new system that Jason had introduced to us?
Correct.
Okay.
So the December 31, 2024 quarterly financial report, um, there were not enough appropriations from the general fund slash or, uh, transfers to meet those obligations through that period. Payroll is largest for pub, public safety. Therefore, um, how were those funds met during that period? So I don't know, I.
We'll have to get you an answer with Jason, our finance director then.
Yep.
That's fine.
Now, again, it, just for clarity's sake too, it, that item, that's a great question. And it has more to do with finance and budgeting, not with the, the payrolls and vouchers. This is a summary of the.
Well, if the funds are not available, am I required to?
The funds are absolutely available.
Again, I, I don't know because it didn't show that in the report. You're not required to give me all the information. Dirk Becker like mentioned that. And I, I don't know. And because I don't know, I'm voting.
As we've said repeatedly, all of this material is provided in advance, days in advance of this meeting. And, and everybody has access to, to finance, to ask every, any and every question you have. And just dropping them on, out of the air on us here, it's impossible for us to respond and it creates.
I've asked the same question for several meetings. And it's, and it's been made very clear by Dirk that the additional information with, which I've asked for in the quarterly reports is, is not being included. And that would be helpful for me saying, yes, you're not required to provide it.
It's not in the quarterly report. We're not required to provide a quarterly report, but you can get any question you have answered. And bring it here with, with you and discuss it at the board table. And then we all have that opportunity to, to see what it is you've asked and all have opportunity to. Because all of us may have questions about the very same thing you've got. But right now, we're just left in a complete vacuum to be able to have a good discussion about it. Because I'd be happy to have a good discussion about it. But if you, you know, went to, to Jason or finance or accounting and, and brought these questions forward, we could have a, a very hearty conversation.
I asked about it during the, the previous meeting.
So we can get another answer back from him. Barry's not here to answer you tonight.
And then, uh, on page 13 and 25, SLC meter, I do not agree with the township's position that approving, uh, a multimillion dollar project, uh, via approving water rates is appropriate. And it seems inconsistent with the, uh, township's purchasing policy.
Okay, so can we have a motion to approve the, uh, item number 12, payroll and vouchers?
So moved.
Support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, six to one. So before we adjourn, we did, I'd had one other item I'd like to bring up. And since, uh, Sergeant Nick Soli is here, today we had the big chili cook-off. And Martin, would you like to recap the events of today, that what happened?
So today was the second annual chili cook-off playoff. And I, and I want to recognize one of our most critical contributors to that process. He was here with us today, um, Sergeant Nick Soli. The township, uh, township hall, uh, has had a chili cook-off, uh, for well over a decade, maybe approaching 20 years. And, uh, that's assessing and the supervisor's office and a, and a, a clerk and, um, uh, finance and building and planning and the police department. And it's been a, a very hearty, uh, competition. And, um, Sergeant Soli has, has repeatedly, uh, came out on top of the township hall, um, chili cook-off. Sergeant Soli has, has repeatedly, uh, came out on top of the township hall, um, chili cook-off. And because there's so much interest in the township in chili, you know, by the way, quintessential American food. Uh, chili cook-offs are, are an honorable way of, of competing and having fun, uh, throughout this country. And there's a million ways to make, uh, chili. Nick's is, 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 um, is uniquely good. And, uh, deserved, I voted for it unknowingly because it is a blind tasting, unknowingly, repeatedly. Despite the fact that I like to, to personally support the underdog, um, which Nick is not. He's, he's, he's definitely the favorite candidate when, when we go into these things because it's so good. We had the chili cook-off playoff, which we started last year. Um, and so the police department, uh, does an entry, the, the township hall does an entry, the fire department does an entry. We had eight entries, uh, that were tasted today. Uh, we had, uh, 70 votes, uh, that were cast for the, um, chili. Um, and, um, every, you know, it was a wonderful competition because, you know, in my opinion, all eight of them were delicious. Nick's again was, uh, one of the top chilis, um, came in the top three and he is, um, second in fact. Which is the second year in a row. And I, and I know that his, his expectations are to win every time. My hope is just to get into the competition once. And, and to one day, uh, get to second place would, would be wonderful. So it is a wonderful chili. Thank you for participating. Uh, Sergeant Soli is, Sergeant Soli is, is by the way
And I, I want to make a comment as well. Uh, first and foremost, if I have to take second, I will gladly take second to the fire department who spends most of their time eating and cooking. So, um, throw that little dig in. But more importantly, I do want to thank, uh, Martin, Jen and Cory for putting that event on. What many of the public don't know is while we all work at Bloomfield Township, it's very rare that we're all, uh, able to gather. So members from the police department, seeing members from DPW and the treasurer's office and the clerk's office. Uh, sometimes we're on our own little islands alone. So it was a great event with great turnout. And, and I do appreciate you guys putting that on and I'll gladly come into work early, uh, any day to do a chili cook-off.
Nick, I have to ask, Nick, there, there seemed like there was a lot of firefighters, EMT there today, more than I recall ever on a single shift. Can you explain that at all?
I've, uh, I filed my complaints with the clerk's office and we'll leave it at that. There'll be an investigation, full investigation.
You're a good sport. Thank you. Congratulations. And we enjoyed your chili.
Can I add one thing that, uh, well, first of all, if you invite the trustees, I don't think I could compete with Nick's chili. My chili's okay, but I'm sure I couldn't. But more tasters, you know, I'd be happy to do that. But on another positive note from our wonderful police force, if I could just say that Saturday was the polar plunge for the police department. And, um, I've been wanting to go to it, but I had a conflict, but I promoted it and I saw the video of other departments, but our departments jumping in that freezing cold lake in Wald Lake. By the way, it's a great restaurant that hosted it this year. I know the restaurant, but I have not jumped in the cold lake. So I commend you for doing that and for a wonderful cause, so.
Thank you. And if you don't know the polar plunge, we raise money for Special Olympics every year. Uh, Oakland County this year raised over $99,000 for, um, Special Olympics just on this event alone. So we take pledge money, um, our dispatchers, uh, Stacy Pratcher and then our detective Kelly McGraw really put in the full effort. Uh, but we go out to Wald Lake and we were fortunate enough to have ice this year and, and plunge in, uh, all for a good cause. So thank you.
Thank you. It is a great cause.
Yeah, I want to come one year and see it, but I'm not jumping.
And one last thing, I do want to thank all the other competitors. We had someone again from the senior center, the cable department, the, the, uh, township hall. Two from township hall, one was from assessing, one from the clerk's department. And did I miss anybody? DPW Engineering, um, uh, and it was great fun as Sergeant Soli just mentioned. It, it's a, a nice opportunity that's rare for all of us to get together in one place and have the opportunity to do that. Just still impossible though, because there are firefighters that are out on, uh, runs. There is police department, uh, uh, patrolling the streets at all times and, and thank you for all that hard work and thanks for making an awesome chili.
Yeah, so having said that, I'll move for adjournment.
So moved.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.